Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the regular minutes of October 28, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion for the executive minutes of November 13, 2019.
Some moved.
Second.
Already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of November 13, 2019.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't want this meeting to go too quickly.
Welcome all. Traditionally, this is our last meeting of the year, but we are having another meeting on December 19th, primarily related to the revised bond ordinance, which we'll hear about shortly. And we're also taking advantage of the extra meeting by introducing some other ordinances related to committees tonight. And that meeting will start at 6:00 PM, not the traditional 8:00 PM. And also, as far as moving meetings around, for very good reason, we have moved the reorganization meeting to Sunday, January 5th, at 3:00 PM, right here in this room. We'll be honored to have Governor Phil Murphy here to give the oath of office to Maureen Byrne, Rachel Erlich, and me. And of course, again, we'll be recognizing Pat Rowe for his service on the council, and also recognizing volunteers that are stepping down after five or more years on a committee. So mark your calendars, that's January 5th at 3:00 PM. And last Friday, Friday of Thanksgiving weekend, rather, we had incredible parade to welcome Santa to the number-one town in the state. He's thinking about moving from the North Pole. And I want to thank Carmen and Marie Toto and all the volunteers for their work in making it such a great event. Carmen pointed out that this was the longest parade ever, just short of an hour. There's many new organizations joining in and marching. And also, I want to thank Jim Butler, who donated the beautiful tree on Waverly Place. He was there to see the Datchison family light it up. On Wednesday, I presented a proclamation to John Caparasso, also known as Johnny Cap, for his 50th anniversary of Esquire Barbershop. As noted in the proclamation, John is known for going to customers who may be homebound or hospital-bound to cut their hair. It was also noted that his local polling is more accurate than that of Gallup, so he's been... And it's also been said, with all the banter that happens in the shop, that it's $15 for the entertainment and a haircut is free. But the most interesting part of the proclamation is John truly has his finger in the pulse of Madison and knows everything going on, but we pulled off a major surprise. He had no idea that the proclamation was going to be presented, and as friends were gathering, he was just kind of looking around, trying to figure out what was going on. I even called up to say I was running late, to ask him to stay late to cut my hair, so that's how we helped surprise him. So if you see John, congratulate him, 50 years. And on Thursday, I helped light the Christmas tree at Realogy. The CEO, Ryan Schneider, who is a Madison resident, talked about our recognition as the number-one town to live in in New Jersey, which is always good to hear that from the largest real estate company in the country. The Employee of the Month for December is Officer Michael Clancy of the Police Department, has been selected for Employee of the Month for stopping to help a stranded motorist in Madison High School parking lot at 10:00 PM and helping change a flat tire. And also, we have an anniversary, Marlene Dolan of the Health Department, 25 years on December 20th. Speaking of the Health Department, I have a proclamation and...
Mike is here.
Mike is here. I was right in the front row. Come on up. And Deb, come on up as the... And this is a resolution for radon awareness month. Whereas elevated radon gas within homes is identified as a significant public health concern, and whereas radon is a naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the second-leading cause of lung cancer, causing as many as 500 lung cancer deaths annually in New Jersey, and whereas elevated radon levels are found in 1 in 15 homes across the United States and pose a serious health threat to families residing in these homes, and whereas any home may have a high levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and whereas radon testing is easy, inexpensive, and elevated levels of radon can be effectively reduced at a cost of a typical home repair, and whereas number of homes in Madison are likely to have elevated levels of radon, and whereas if all New Jersey homes with a radon concentrations at or above four picocures per liter were mitigated, about 83 lives could be saved this year. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as radon awareness month, and call upon residents who have not done so to test their homes for radon, to reduce the radon levels if elevated, and to protect their families from serious health risks. Thank you, Mike. This is Mike Fitzpatrick, our Health Officer.
Thank you, and appreciate it, Mayor and Council, for the support. And as part of this proclamation, starting almost immediately, we will have radon scanners available to residents of the borough so they can take advantage of testing their homes if they should so choose. This is a good time of year because starting to get cold, that means windows are closed, and therefore you get the highest average levels, and so therefore the program is free, it's subsidized, and actually underwritten by the State of New Jersey, DEP, so there's no cost to Madison residents, nor to them directly or to the borough itself. So thank you very much for this initiative, appreciate it.
On to reports from Committees, Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
Thank you. First, from the Police Department. Chief Datchison is pleased to announce that both of his active-duty officers are safely back in the United States after serving our nation abroad. Patrolman Kyle McDermott, who was deployed to Helmand, Providence, Afghanistan, will be returning to work in the next weeks to come. And Sean McCarthy, who was serving in Africa, will be returning to work in the near future. And this is a complicated message, but the Police Department would like to alert residents about a U.S. Postal Service insurance fraud scam that is beginning to trend in our area. Residents may receive a package with another person's name on it at their home address. The mail will likely be a package containing blank index cards or another item with no value. Once again, the package will display the resident's address, but an unknown party's name. Within a few days, a letter from the U.S. Postal Service Domestic Claims Accounts Payable Branch will arrive. It will be addressed to the same unknown party, but again, use the resident's address. The letter will contain instructions for processing a lost or damaged article claim and reference an article number which will match the tracking number on the previously-received package. Is everybody following this? Okay. The U.S. Postal Inspector Service advises that this is an insurance fraud scam they are familiar with. The scammer will purchase insurance for a package with minimal value, like the index cards, then mail it to a random address with the intent of filing a false lost article claim. There will likely be several packages, envelopes, received at once. If this happens, if you followed all this, please contact the postal authorities if you receive such a package. And then finally, during the month, the Madison Police Department received federal funding in the amount of $3,000 for the replacement of body armor. From the Fire Department, during the month of November, the Fire Department responded to 41 general alarms, 18 still alarms, 25 investigations, and 28 EMS calls, and they conducted two training drills, 24 resale smoke CO inspections, and 55 fire prevention inspections were made. And then from the Open Space Committee, the trust fund update. This is just general. Obviously, the fund is robust at this point, but we do have several significant projects coming up that will require significant outlays from the fund. The Hartley Dodge Memorial East Wing and Plaza Historic Restoration is going to require our dollars to make that happen. We are working with the school board, and I hope that shared services will continue to push this, to install another turf field at the MRC complex. And we use the fund also to pay down the debt, and we are talking about continued work on the Dodge Field with the renovation of the other building that's on the site, as well as a up-to-date 21st Century Playground, the playground at the MRC. And this year, the fund did help to improve our park trails. We continue to complete the conservation plan at the MRC, and we did the Dodge improvements and more. So just a general picture of what's going on with the open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, this is Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Department and Jim Burnett has been very busy. There's a couple of very important finance-related items on the agenda tonight. First is the introduction of a bond ordinance, which will authorize the borough to add an additional $1,272,000. These funds will be combined with an earlier bond ordinance and will fund much-needed improvement at the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting, our sewerage treatment plant. The improvements will be three things. First, they will help the plant manage phosphorus levels, which is a very big concern with the DEP right now. Second, they will replace old equipment. And third, they will expand the plant capacity, which is currently at the maximum. The bonds will be funded through the New Jersey One Bank, which used to be called the Environmental Infrastructure Trust. A portion of the borrowings will be at zero interest, which will help the borough reduce borrowing costs. The ordinance will be introduced this evening, and there will be a hearing and a special council meeting on Thursday, December 19th. Second important item on the agenda is a discussion of the 2020 road improvements. Last week, the council received a draft of the five-year capital plan. The administration, with the help of the department heads, have been working very hard with engineering, and Bob Vogel will be talking about that five-year capital plan tonight. As we've done in the past, we're first going to review the roads that will be fixed in 2020. We do this so the funding ordinances can be implemented in January and the projects bid out in March. Getting a head start on these bids helped the borough get the best pricing, thus saving tax dollars. Finally, the borough will be canceling old capital ordinance via resolution. Once a project is completed, the ordinances are canceled, so the remaining funds can be unencumbered and used to fund future projects. This is an important task that the council does at this time of the year. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in addition to the electric and water utilities business-as-usual activities, from the Water Department, we have the fact that they have closed the valve at the Rosedale Skating Rink, which retains water for the winter skating. The valve was closed earlier this year in hopes that Mother Nature would help fill it instead of using drinking water. And the good news is that this time it's about half-full, and according to weather reports, which we will experience tonight, and another couple of rains, it should be full by the time it's cold enough to freeze. It typically takes 275,000 to 300,000 gallons of water to fill the rink, which is equal to about one-half of our water tank's capacity. So it's very nice that weather is cooperating this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilwoman Carmela Vitale said, we're going to be hearing about the five-year capital plan earlier this evening. Bob Vogel was in, talking about the proposed reconstruction of Burnett Road, which will take place next year. Additionally, I spent Thanksgiving in Toronto, and I got snowed in. When I got back in on Tuesday morning, the roads were clear in Madison, and DPW was out picking up leaves. So thank you to DPW for all your good work. Our streets are clear, and it looks like they're ready to do it all over again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we still have Christmas trees left, don't we?
Yes.
Christmas trees over Dodge Field, if anybody wants advice. We have some. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee is recruiting volunteers for the telephone reassurance program. Two volunteers have registered so far. Meetings with Meals on Wheels and two local churches have resulted in agreements to work to identify in Madison people who could be added to the telephone reassurance program. Information has been distributed through the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee and the Health Department to inform people of the 2020 census and how they can get help if needed to complete their forms, online or on paper. Contact has been made with Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill's casework team to get information on how disabled veterans living at Rexford Tucker can get resolution of taxing on disability payments. Senior Center, with the support of members of the Environmental Commission, volunteer seniors will help make t-shirt bags. Please contact the Senior Center if you'd like to participate. If you haven't done so already, please sign up for Alert Madison. This is critical. You may contact seniorservices@rosenet.org for more information. From the Director of Business Development Downtown Development Commission, there are two dates left for the DDC indoor-outdoor holiday market, December 12th and 19th. The market is held at the Madison Community Arts Center at 10 Kings Road from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. It's a great place to shop for holiday gifts and items for holiday entertaining. Chamber of Commerce, the search for Rosie the Rose City Reindeer Scavenger Hunt began on Saturday, November 30th, and will end on Monday, December 16th. This is very popular with adults and kids. 2019 limited-edition holiday ornament is available for $20 and can be purchased at the Madison Pharmacy, Stewart Morris Awards, Gifts and Flags in the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. The Jade Crystal Beveled Ornament is round and etched with the image of Madison Historic James Building. Each ornament includes a silver hanging cord and a two-piece gift box. On Saturday, December 14th, there will be a special fundraising event at the Art Center called Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, and will be presented by the Voice Actors Orchestra. The first jazz concert in the intimate concert series Rio Clemente had to be postponed from December 2nd due to bad weather. It's been rescheduled for February 17th. Museum of Early Trades and Crafts participated this last weekend in the Morris County's Holly Walk, which attracted hundreds of visitors from around the country. The MBTC, the Madison Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, is still recovering from a cyber attack that affected many organizations throughout the state, including Shakespeare Theater and the Stickley Museum. Perpetrate has managed to infiltrate the servers of a number of IT providers early last week, resulting in encrypted files for their customers. As of now, MBTC, the museum, is reexamining their IT needs, trying to rebuild some files and working as best they can in spite of this. Recreation Advisory Committee, I won't talk about Rosedale Rink, that's already been talked about, the Recreation Department is currently working with our primary sports organizations to finalize the schedule for spring and summer 2020. Remaining open times will be offered to secondary groups, that is rentals, beginning January 2nd, 2020. Please email Zach Ellis at recreation@rosenet.org if you're interested in reserving space. Registration for the spring sports is currently available online, and links to the websites for each sport can be found on the Recreation page at Rosenet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Residents are still able to obtain flu vaccines at the Health Department. Please call for more information. As the mayor said earlier, congratulations to Marlene Dolan on reaching her 25th anniversary with the borough. Pet licensing is underway for 2020. Look for renewal information in the next few weeks. Radon Awareness Month, we've already said, is in January, and you can get those testing kits for free from the Health Department. And finally, Joanne Grillo, Registrar and Board of Health Secretary, is retiring this week. We would like to thank her for her service to the residents of the Borough of Madison and her professionalism and dedication. That's all.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
None received, Mayor.
And now we're on to our first invitation for discussion. This is limited to agenda items on the discussion agenda and also the resolutions. I'll quickly go through the items so you know what you can comment on. If you wish to comment on other topics, that period will come up a little bit later in the meeting. The agenda discussions, we'll be talking about the joint meeting financing and bond ordinance, as Ms. Vitale already mentioned. I'll be giving an update on affordable housing, discussion on the mayor and council bylaws, capital ordinance cancellations, the 2020 capital plan for road reconstruction, building overlay, and borough master plan. And these are the resolutions that you can comment on, and also you'll be aware of in the consent agenda when that comes up. Resolution 334, authorizing shared service agreement with the Borough of Chatham providing IT services. We continue to lead the way in shared services. 335 is rejecting bid for collection and hauling of recyclable materials and authorization for negotiation. 336 is authorizing the application for funding from the Governor's Council on alcoholism and drug abuse through the County of Morris, and this would be a grant of $11,000 with a cash match from the Borough of 28 and in-kind of 84 under it. Resolution 337 is awarding contract to Robert Kopash for the filming of borough council meetings at $550 per meeting, or $100 an hour for consulting services. 338 is authorizing purchase of fiber insulation and connection for the North Street Pump Station in the intersection of Danforth Road and Park Avenue. This is an amount of $15,367, funded through ordinance 36, 2019. Sorry, as I flip through pages here. Resolution 340 is professional service contract to Mot McDonald for additional environmental remediation, monitoring, and compliance at Hartley Dodge at the amount of $84,000. And this is funded through ordinance 25, 2018. Resolution 341 is awarding a contract for yard waste collection disposal after a rebid. It's to Waste Industries for a $206,000 for a one-year contract funded in the 2020 budget. Resolution 342 is deed restrictions for 24 Central Avenue, also 44 Cook Avenue, and these are, and 30 Central Avenue. This is part of our affordable housing, these are all affordable housing locations, and we'll be covering that in my report shortly. Resolution 343 is authorizing advertisement for a part-time sidewalk sweeper that would start in the spring. Resolution 344 is a change order request for Cefeli &amp; Son Contracting for the amount of $1,900 on a community-based reconstruction project, and that is funded through ordinance 18, 2018. Resolution 345 is awarding cooperative contract to Alpine Consulting for document scanning and archive services under the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. This is amending Resolution 109, 2019. This is additional services for $15,500, and this is being funded through the Engineering 2019 Operating Budget. Resolution 346 is canceling completed capital improvement ordinances. You'll be hearing about that shortly. The Resolution 347, Resolution authorizing a contract with Susan Blickstein, LLC, for professional services regarding the Borough Master Plan. You're going to hear about that shortly. Resolution 348 is awarding electric materials bid to total unused amount of $26,949, and that will be coming through the Electric Utilities Operation Budget. And also, Resolution 349 is authorizing a purchase of a vehicle under the Educational Services Commission, and this is not to exceed $42,800, and this is coming from the Building Department Operating Budget. If you want to comment on any of those resolutions or the agenda items, please step forward, state your name, your address, the agenda item you're commenting on, and please write your name and address on the clipboard. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but you get a one-minute grace period that will stop you at four. Yes?
Steve Sherman, I'm on Myrtle Avenue. I have some concerns about the Burnett resurfacing, and when that's going to take place. Congresswoman Cohen told me that at the meeting earlier...
Congresswoman.
All in good time, you'll get this. Council member told me that it's going to start in 2020 in the spring, and my concern is a couple of things. One, I live on Myrtle Avenue, which is two streets over, and some of the traffic, when they close it, is going to go down that street. It's already a pretty congested street. There's new houses going up, there's lots of trucks. There's the shuttle to Kirby at the Y that goes down that street, and I'm sure the shuttle from the Senior Center is going to have to go down that street as well, or other side streets, so I'm worried about the traffic. And if it's taking place in the spring, the Little League starts on April 13th, so you're going to have a lot of traffic. So that's just some of the concerns that I had, and I didn't know whether that was going to be, was there going to be a plan of certain detours? Are they going to do all of Burnett at the same time? Are they going to do half and half? I heard there's sidewalks that might be involved, so I've just, just a concern.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So what we'll do is when Bob Vogel comes up for his capital presentation, I'll have him give a little more detail on the plan for Burnett, but certainly any projects in and around schools take extra planning, so if you don't mind staying a little bit longer, you'll get that answer.
Not a problem. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on any of the agenda items I had mentioned? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go on to agenda discussions. The Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting Finance Financing Bond Ordinance.
Mayor, I can take this. Just supplementing the report from Councilwoman Vitale. For those watching at home, the joint meeting is a joint venture for a sewer processing plant between the Borough of Madison and the Borough of Chatham, and it's the longest shared service agreement in the history of New Jersey. It's over 101 years old. And the plant is operated jointly between the two towns and is located on Passaic Avenue in Chatham. And the last major renovation at that site was approximately 25 years ago. So we have three reasons why we're doing this significant project, which will be approximately $72,200 of construction. One, as alluded by Carmella, is to deal with a phosphorus issue. The flue, and after it's treated, gets discharged into Passaic River. There's new standards established by DEP and by EPA as to what you can discharge into a public waterway, so we have to modify our operation to address and meet those stringent requirements. Two is the equipment is approximately 25 to 30 years old, so the belt presses and other significant pieces of equipment are aging in place, and there's not a redundancy. If they fail, we would have difficulty in terms of operating the facility. So this will allow us to replace and modernize the equipment and also provide a redundancy feature with some of the critical pieces of equipment. In the event they have to get scheduled maintenance and go offline, we'll have another piece of equipment to replace them and continue the process. And the third was alluded to, that there's a requirement by the State of New Jersey that you do what's called a capacity assurance report with what your available capacity is, and that once you hit 80% of the potential maximum capacity of your facility, you have to come up with a plan on how you're going to deal in the future. So as part of that, both towns had a planning exercise and did a 10-year build-out analysis with our planner that we shared as to what is the future coming in terms of affordable housing, commercial development, Main Street redevelopment, and things of that nature in both towns to project out what's the demand. And the combination of all those factors, the phosphorus, the need for the, to replace the old equipment, and the fact that we need to plan for the future, generated the need to do this project. The bank, or the lender, is the infrastructure bank of the State of New Jersey, and the important feature there is that a minimum of 50% of the financing will be at 0% interest, which is a benefit to the taxpayers here, and it's better than we can achieve, even though we're AAA in the marketplace. So our hope is that through negotiations, we may be able to increase that percentage to 70% of the loan amount to be at 0% interest. The remainder of that, whether it's going to be 20% or 50%, will be at the tax-exempt rate, which right now is less than 1%. So it's a very attractive financing. It's an important thing to plan for the future of both our communities, and we're recommending the governing body to approve this this evening. This would be the introduction. The final adoption hopefully would be on December 19th at a special meeting convened specifically for this purpose. The governing body tends to only meet once a year in December. This year, because of how important it is to get this project moving, they've scheduled a second special meeting just for the purpose of adopting this ordinance. So we hope that will be approved this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So this is ordinance 56, 2019, which will be introduced. Affordable Housing Update. So this is, as we had said earlier in the year, we have periodic updates on what is going on with our affordable housing. So let me give you the latest right now. Borough continues to work with our planners and special legal... Borough continues to work with our planners and Special Legal Counsel to fight for a reasonable, affordable housing settlement with a fair share housing center. A memorandum of understanding has been executed, and all parties are now working to expand that document into a fully documented settlement agreement that can be presented to the community for comment and eventually to the court for ratification. The Borough still has immunity against builder's remedy litigation where developers seek to avoid the protections of the Borough's zoning ordinance and build large housing projects in neighborhoods not zoned for that purpose. So we still have our immunity in place, so that cannot happen in Madison. Discussion with Morris County officials continue regarding our request to divert 2.167 acres at the MRC to build 40 units of affordable housing with a priority for military veterans to live in those apartments. No hearing dates have been set to present our application to the Morris County Open Space Committee, and then it would go on to the freeholders after that. We have a case management conference with the judge, special master, and the attorneys for both sides tomorrow afternoon to review the open issues and to continue our immunity. Judge Gausse has set a preliminary fairness and compliance hearing for January 10th, 2020, at 1:00 PM in Newton. That date might change depending on our hearing schedule with Morris County. Also mentioned the resolutions that are related to deed restrictions, so these are existing affordable housing units that we have in town that have been put online in recent years, and in order to get credit for that, we have to have deed restrictions on those, and so we've been working to put those in place, and that will prove the resolution, and the parties will sign that, so we will get credit for those units. And I will continue to make these periodic updates as things move along, and a lot will be happening in 2020. Any questions from the council? Okay. I'm getting a little clogged up here, excuse me. Mayor and council bylaws, Carmella.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to go back a little bit further. A while ago, the mayor convened a committee to study the committee and commissions, which number about 23 in the Borough of Madison. So it was started, the chair of that committee was Ben Wolkowitz, and he worked very hard on it, and our decision was that we were going to go forward with it and complete the work that he's done. So Pat Rowe and Deb Cohen and myself have been working on some of the ordinances and the committees that you'll see later on. We have five of them coming up as new ordinances. So during that process, we realized that there probably was, there was a strong connection with the committees and the liaison assignments, and we kind of looked at the bylaws, and the mayor and I met and said, hey, listen, you know, the bylaws have not been really scrutinized since 2015. They should really be done like every couple of years. Things change, and they've changed dramatically. We have new committees that have come on that liaisons are attending meetings, but they're not in the bylaws. So there has been, you know, some changes. There's changes in personnel and whatever, and so we thought it would be a good time to really take a look at these bylaws again. We'll probably, at this point, use the old bylaws. Is that what you wanted to do in January? And then amend all of this. What we have to do first, according to the bylaws, is that one of the council members has to say to the mayor, listen, we need amended additions to the bylaws, and then the mayor will appoint a committee to study the bylaws.
Yep, and some of it, which Carmella and I discussed, is the fact that there are two liaison positions in particular that have very heavy meeting obligations, and then there's some that have very light ones, so the idea would be to possibly shift some of those burdens into what I would call the free agent category, and so the person could continue with it, or it could be taken by someone else. As I looked at it, and we had this discussion as to whether it had to be updated by ordinance or resolution, it looks like most of them were done by resolution.
Resolution, and you need three members for the committee.
Right, so we can appoint the committee. It might be a very challenging turnaround, but there is a potential we could come back on the 19th with a resolution to amend the committee. So what I would like to do right now is appoint the committee committee to be the bylaws committee, which is Carmella Vitale, Pat Rowe, and Deb Cohen. Should the work extend into the new year, then we will reconstitute that committee at that point. So you've got your marching orders, and you can look, all right. At least you're not passing notes, no, sorry.
No, no, I'm just saying, there are so many, there are several obvious changes that can be done just like that that are not relevant anymore.
Right, so if we, and so it may be multiple steps, so maybe we might, we might be able to get together in this very quiet time of year, there's nothing else going on in December, and so maybe we'll have resolutions. If not, we'll be adopting the bylaws as they are now and then revising them, okay? Thank you. Capital ordinance cancellations.
Mayor, this is an annual process that is recommended by the auditor and by our CFO as a best practice, so these are funding ordinances for capital projects where the projects have been completed, all the bills have been paid, but there are balances in the accounts. So in order to put the money back into the accounts where the money came from, we have to go through a process to cancel them and cancel the project. So going back would be into the General Capital Improvement Fund would be $228,000 for multiple projects that are listed in the attachment to the resolution. The electric capital would be the cancellation of multiple projects for the amount of $57,000, and then the water capital utility fund would be $211,000 of cancellations. So the total cancellation of funds going back into the pots would be $496,000, and we recommend it for your approval, and then this way the governing body will have the ability in 2020 and future years to reallocate the money to the new priorities that they establish.
Any questions or discussion on that? That is resolution 346. 2020 Capital Budget Plan and Road Reconstruction, Mill and Overlay. So as we just mentioned a little earlier, Bob, we've given you some extra little, give you an extra time to cover.
No extra time, no extra time.
Just, yeah. Fit it in the usual time, but you'll cover the Burnett Road logistics.
So, good evening, everyone. Mayor and council, and thank you for this opportunity. As has become customary, we'd like to discuss the road improvement projects before the end of the year so that we can go forward with our advertising and appropriating funds in the February, March timeframe. We'll be receiving bids on these projects in the April, May timeframe, and we'll be going to construction on these projects next summer. Unfortunately, all those things, when you line them up, take a fair amount of time in totality, and it's nice to have the budget approved in the January timeframe, which is why we are talking about it right now. Michael did a nice presentation for us here up on the screen, and it shows 2020 capital road improvement projects, which we're talking about tonight. The road reconstruction projects, we generally divide them up into both mill overlay, which is resurfacing, and road reconstruction, which is the drainage improvements and curbing sidewalks, much more extensive construction projects that we bid independently. Those are listed here on this slide, and our number one project is Glenwild Road and Glenwild Circle. This is a project which we received municipal aid, NJDOT state financing for last year in an amount of $230,000, which is reimbursement type of funding from the state, always very welcome. We've had many meetings with the Glenwild Road residents and been through the Complete Streets Committee, and everyone's anxious to see that project move forward, so happily we can fund that this year and move forward with that. It was also on the capital budget in 2019 in the same spot, so we haven't moved it around. Second project is Albright Circle, which does not have any outside independent funding, but was a public service initiated project, which we've done coordination with public service on. Public service came and replaced the gas lines initially and has done other road resurfacing projects for us, and we told them this was on our list to do, and so they just repaired trenches, and we'll do a full reconstruction on Albright Circle in the coming year, at least that's the plan. Beverly Road, another public service coordination project, which is on our list of reconstruction projects this year. And finally, Burnout Road, we had a public, not, a public informal hearing on earlier this evening, which many of you were at, so thank you. And you saw that the residents were engaged and very interested in what we were doing. The state assistance that we got from NJDOT, which is under the Municipal Aid 2020 Program, was quite good. It was a $280,000 approximate grant from DOT, which allows us to actually accomplish that project this year, which, again, is a little bit, a little bit better scheduled than what we had anticipated without state funding, so all good news there. As far as the Burnett Road Traffic Control Plan is concerned, I heard a question earlier, which, and we did get some of those questions at 6 o'clock at the informal hearing as well. So DOT naturally, as a course of their review process, requires us.
I think the question was more not on the traffic control, but the time, during construction time.
I'm afraid.
Yeah, will there be detours? Will it be coordinated around school hours and so on?
So normally, when we do a project of this type, it will go section by section, so not the entire road will be, will be blocked off for the entire construction period. Also, there are required by law, we have to have detour signs put up whenever we have a full detour. Many times, we get the contractor to work on one side of the road only at a time, which means that there is traffic that can circulate past the construction project, which means the whole road is not shut down, just a portion of the road is shut down. And this is all formalized in a specific planning document, which we sent down to the DOT, which you yourself can review if you'd like as part of the construction documents for the project, which we did in February. So there's a lot that goes on with regards to traffic control, and we welcome your input to that, to that project.
Pat? Yeah, I think, Bob, the biggest issue is always the school traffic being adjacent to the high school. I mean, one of the reasons we moved all these projects up as early as we do is so that we could schedule them during the summer if at all possible. Do we anticipate in this case that the bulk of the work will be done in between the time when school end session and start session?
We absolutely do, and the state's going to be cooperative with that. I think the funding came at a time this past year, which the state accelerated a bit to get on our normal budget schedules on the municipal level so that we can actually accomplish that project during the summer as well. So we'll have two state aid projects going on during the three months of the summer this coming summer.
Okay.
It's good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then moving on, unless there's other questions. Does anybody have any independent questions?
Just a quick, you did mention, but just to make it stand out, so of the $1.6 million capital outlay, a half a million is coming from state aid, which is very impressive, and your work on chasing those dollars and Frank's work is greatly appreciated.
Thanks very much. So the next, the next slide here is our mill and overlay projects, which are strictly resurfacing projects for next year. Now, most of these projects are awarded by nature of prebid county cooperative funding source, not funding sources, but bids, sorry. And the prices are fixed, and they're fixed early in the year, and it allows us to go directly to those without an independent bid, so it helps expedite projects for the resurfacing, which include not only micro-surfacing, crack sealing, mill and overlay work generally done through TILCON, but it allows us to get a fair amount of work done at nominal cost. The projects that are included in the resurfacing for next year are Cross Gates Road, East Lane and West Lane, which are all kind of the same grouping and area of town. There's a section of Woodland Road between Green Avenue and Gibbons Place, which we have moved up a year on the schedule because of the degradation of the road's surface. We managed to put that in in a 2020 slot where previously it was at 2021. On Grove Street, public service, another coordination project that we had with public service, which we will be going in. We did the water main replacement utility this year. Public service did the gas main utility replacement this year, and we're going to do the complete resurfacing next year under the budget. And so those budget numbers are for 2020. Again, looking at the 2019 budget, we moved that up from a 2021 project to 2020, so that's helpful for those residents with all the utility trenches, which currently are kind of aggravating the final road conditions. Highland Avenue is similar, however, Highland has a community development block grant, which will be completed this spring for a water main replacement, and that will require us to go back and resurface that road as soon as possible this summer as well. Peachtree Lane, let me think, nothing special about Peachtree Lane, just it's been on our schedule, it continues on our schedule, and we will accomplish that this coming summer. There are a number of small projects, Alma Avenue, Rachel Avenue, Roscoe, which are the Chatham Township annexed areas. Now strangely, the pavement joints on those roads happen about halfway through the street, and so the really aged pavement is right next to some fairly new pavement, but we're paving the older section next summer, and those are the half-streets that you're seeing there between Alma, Rachel, and Roscoe. The Parks Advisory Committee had recommended that we spend some time up at Summer Hill Park, and we have some resurfacing that's going to be done there. And Surrey Lane is a public service coordination project, which we will do. And the last thing is the Prospect Street Parking Lot, which we've been talking about for a couple of years, and we'd like to get the resurfacing done on that this coming summer. Any questions on any of those?
Just a quick question on the Summer Hill Parking Lot. Are you only doing what is currently paved? There's that area of gravel by the soccer field, volleyball field, frisbee field, whatever it's being used for. Is that going to be paved over as well, or is that going to remain gravel?
So what is in the estimate right now is redoing all the pavement that's there. So you've indicated there's a spot there where I believe public service had actually staged equipment at one point in time, which they resurfaced with stone and not without, so it's bare stone right now. If we'd like to get that paved and formalized into like a off-road parking area of some type, we can certainly do that. I don't think it's an exorbitant cost, but we'll have to look at what additional cost that would be.
That's right. The reason I ask is, and they've heard this, this came up at the Y last summer, in the summer and the spring, kids play volleyball up there, and that's where they park in that little area.
Right.
So I think if it was paved, it would.
Yeah, that's a little gravel parking area off to the side there is very well used. Agreed. So if everyone agrees that we should look into resurfacing that with asphalt, I'm perfectly happy to do that. Okay, and so the total reconstruction, no, the total resurfacing dollars came in at just over a million dollars, $1,65,000, and I believe there is a slide on totals as well coming up. Those are the locations of the roads for the mill and overlay. Total capital funding request for roads is therefore in the budget at $2.675 million. And I think as far as, as far as anything else concerned, Carmella and me had covered it all, as far as our timing and hopes that we can go to advertising and appropriations in February this year. Any, Pat?
So I'm fine with the road projects, but I did have one concern since you guys gave us the full sort of draft five-year capital plan, and that is that this year, we're saying for general capital, it's going to be 3.9. Last year, last year we spent 3.3, so we're up by 600K. I understand about $500,000 or $600,000 is going to be reversed by the state, but we also had about $200,000 or $300,000 of this year's project. But we also had about 200 or 300,000 of this year's projects reimbursed, so that's still an uptick of a couple hundred thousand dollars minimum. And the other two capital items are okay. I'm sorry, the, the other general capital. The utility capital's up a bit, and then, but looking at next year, the projection you guys gave us shows us increasing the total spend in general capital to 6.3 million over 4.6 this year, I'm sorry, 4.6 next year, and probably about 4.6 this year. Has somebody really looked at that and, and knows how we're going to be able to pay for that? Because I don't see how we're going to get enough money to increase the capital budget that much in one year.
So if it turns out the way the 2020 capital budget discussions have turned out, Pat, we did a lot of trimming this year. The difference between the asks and the gives as far as funding the capital budget for 2019 were as large as I've seen them. And so we had to do a lot of cutting in order to meet that number, and I suspect that's going to have to happen next year as well.
Yeah, because I mean, right now, I haven't seen the, I did ask Jim for what the numbers for the electricity utility look like this summer, but I'm assuming things are going to be relatively flat coming out of this year, so that in reality, our, our capital spend is kind of capped at what we have been spending the last couple of years.
Correct.
And we just need to find a way to take those projects and push them out, and have you guys really prioritize the ones that need to get done in 2021 versus the next year, but-
That is the process.
It's difficult. I'd prefer, though, if you guys were doing that on at least a three-year-out basis, so you weren't saying to us, you know, next year, you have to make, that's, that's a lot of trimming to do in one year.
One year.
That's fair, and I think that's something that we can talk through January on and see if we can get a finer, finer pencil.
All right. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bob.
You.
Borough Master Plan, Ostry.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. So, our master plan was written in 1992. Since then, according to state statute, we've had to do reexam reports. So now we've had a number of reexam reports. These documents that we refer to from time to time at the Planning Board level are guiding principles for when we create zoning laws. And, you know, times have changed since 1992, and the document is really outdated and is really no longer relevant in many parts. So you received tonight a proposal from Susan Blixstein, our planner, and it is focused, the update is going to be focused on the core land use challenges facing the borough. And she's determined to create a user-friendly land use policy document that will provide a framework for the borough's land use decision-making for the coming decade. So there'll be new goals and objectives, new demographic analysis, a new land use element, a new multi-modal circulation slash community mobility element, and focused analysis and recommendations related to historic preservation, sustainability, and resiliency. The open space element is being put together by the Open Space Committee with the help of the Land Conservancy. That will go to the Planning Board sometime in the new year, and will be a part of this, as well as the natural resources inventory and that the Environmental Commission and Sustainable Madison has been working on. And so she then describes how this process is going to be very public, that we want input from the public. We want a series of public meetings. We want to form a committee that is composed of a number of people from the different disciplines, like Environmental Commission, the Council, Planning Board, Historic Preservation, and this document will take the place of all the many documents that we're now dealing with. This will be our Bible going forward. And we have included in this, she will have community workshop visioning sessions. She's recommended the pop-up workshops, two of them. We have included that in the price here. I have to say that what she's put together is really exciting from the standpoint of being on the Planning Board, and I think that the price is reasonable. I understand that several other towns have just gone through this process and have had to spend a lot more money. And does anyone have any questions?
And so we affirm that this would be funded over three budget cycles by ordinance tonight will, I mean, a resolution tonight would approve this moving forward, so we'd have money reserved in 2019, 2020, and 2021.
We have money reserved this year so far, so.
Any questions or comments? Right, so that's Resolution 347, 2019 on the consent. Now we move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the Council held on Wednesday, November the 13th, and Monday, November the 25th, 2019. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the Borough Clerk, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 53-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 136 of the Code of the Borough of Madison entitled Parks Regarding User Fees for Borough Recreation Programs.
I open the hearing for ordinance 53. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 53-2019.
I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 53-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law, ordinance 54-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $363,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for Facility Improvements to Dodge Field.
I open hearing for ordinance 54. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 54-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law, ordinance 55-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $85,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Additional Remediation Testing at the rear of the Hartley Dodge Memorial.
I open hearing for ordinance 55. Anyone wish to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 55-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 55-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Now we move on to the second for invitations for discussion from the public. This is when you may comment on any topic, but again, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute race period and ask you to stop at four minutes. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinances scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for Thursday, December the 19th, 2019. All be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 56-2019.
Bond ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $1,272,000 for the funding of a portion of the cost of the improvements of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility by and for the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such additional appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Mayor, I move ordinance 56-2019.
Second.
And again, this was just discussed on the agenda discussion about the reason for this. Any further council discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 57-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 32 of the Borough Code, establishing the Patriotic Celebrations Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 57-2019.
I'll second that.
And the next, this ordinance, the next couple ones are taking care of all the great work of the committee committee. Pat, did-
Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to Carmella and Deb. About a year ago, I raised this issue with the mayor over one of the committees that I could not actually figure out if it was properly authorized, and if it was, it was not properly constituted. And so the decision was made to put the committee together. You know, Ben initially edited up, unfortunately, because of his illness, it kind of got delayed, and then he passed away. So, you know, we picked this up in the fall. We're trying to get the four done here that actually, as far as we can tell, are probably not valid right now. And so that come January, well, it's not going to be the first, but whatever, the fifth, we can, you can properly appoint people to committees that are legally authorized. There are additional changes that are going to be, need to be made to the DDC, which changes bylaws and a whole bunch of other committees, but those committees are properly authorized at this time. There just needs to be some tweaks to kind of bring all of them into sort of the same coordinated list of things that I had looked at, which include, you know, do we, how we properly define the membership? Is there a real mission for them? Are they doing proper reporting? Are they following the OKR rules, things like that? And it's just sort of fixing some of the things that are not as, as bad as in these particular cases. So we're trying to get these done tonight, and then finalize it in 10 days. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Carmella and then Ostry.
I also want to say thank you to Pat and Deb. And I want to say a special thank you to Liz Osborne, because she went above and beyond the call of duty, all of her other stuff that she does. We spent hours, her and I, going over and looking and writing these ordinances. And it was, it's quite an accomplishment, because as Pat said, Patriotic Celebration Committee has been doing parades and paver projects and whatever. And over the past, over the years, they've been known as something Veterans Committee and whatever. So this makes them absolutely, you know, right at this point. Same way with Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and, and the Parks Advisory Committee that was started in 1978. I had a great conversation with an old council person that advised Mayor Glenn Head at that point, that she thought that we should have, you know, these particular kinds of committees and whatever. So what we're trying to do is to make everybody very consistent, like Pat talked about, but actually establish them. So it's been great. This project has not stopped. We have other committees that we're going to look at. These may be amended after we actually see them enforced in January, but we're, we're going to deal with that. But this was a great accomplishment, so I want to thank, and Ray took a really good look at these, and we're, you know, so I think that we've done a great job. So I appreciate working with the two of them. It was good. You know, it was very sad that Ben started this, because he had us on a good roll. And, but, you know, so we, we do this in honor of Ben. We got it done, Ben. We got four of them done.
Ostry?
Yeah, so I too want to thank the committee, because, you know, this is a, a big deal to get some consistency, to make sure they're codified legally. From the standpoint, that protects the volunteers as well as the borough from any legal issues. And I read them over, and I think they look great. And I mean, I just can't believe that some of them have been operating without any mandate or, you know, legally incorporated. So thank you very much for that, everybody.
Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 58-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 161 of the Borough Code, establishing the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 58-2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 60-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 137-11 of the Borough Code, establishing the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 59-2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Just real quick, I'll throw in my thanks here. It was a learning experience for me, being my first year on council, and especially with this one that was in place. And then we discovered, Pat discovered, that it was rescinded, and we had to redo it so that it fits today's rec advisory and how we wanted to make sure it was worded to include all of the, the sports. So, but yeah, so this was on the books, then got off the books, and is now back on the books officially.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 60-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 136 of the Borough Code, establishing the Parks Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 60-2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, Consent Agenda Resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R 334, 2019 through R 349, 2019.
A second.
Any that need to be pulled or discussed? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Outside, remind you again that we have added one more meeting to this year, Thursday, December 19th, at 6:00 P. M. Can I have the voucher registered?
Current fund, $7,169,693.27. General capital fund, $97,191.57. The electric operating fund, $274,830.43. Water operating fund, $3,175.38. For the trust, $40,587. The total is $7,585,477.65.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
A second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no new business.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well done. Thank you all.
Wow, I thought this was going to last much longer.
See, I told you that it's here.
Yeah.
We're very efficient.
I know.
Yeah, we could have got another hour. Yeah, it usually goes on.